Good evening. The October 8, 2015 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. This evening, the prayer and the pledge will be led by Pastor Marshall Gonzalez of the Seventh Day Adventist Church. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Father, we want to thank you for your wonderful blessings. We thank you for this day of life you've given to us, and we thank you also for the opportunity and the privilege to serve you and to serve this great city. We thank you, Father, for this city, wonderful city. And I pray, Lord, I pray a blessing over the mayor, his family, all the council members and their family. I pray you would give them wisdom and understanding from heaven as they go over all the different issues. I pray also, Father, for all of the first responders, those men and women who put their lives on the line. Be with them also and watch over them. And Father, once again, this is your city, and we're thankful that you are in control of everything. Bless this council meeting and bless everyone who's here as well, for I ask it in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Gonzalez. Employee recognition. Tonight, we're going to recognize the National Night Out team with Ms. Shakita Brantley with Partners in Prevention and our PAR representatives Jeff Hall, James Bray, Chris Clayton, Missy Ryan, John Rolls, Kendrick Montgomery, and Sergeant Jackie Howes. Please come forward. Oh, just wait, there's a lot more to clap for. Okay, the annual National Night Out campaign is a program of the National Association of Town Watch. It's a community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, better places to live. It enhances the relationships between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community and provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. Longview just held our annual National Night Out event on Tuesday this week, and it counts as a resounding success in part due to the leadership and organizational success of the team of city employees. Longview has joined nearly 17,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide by hosting 108 parties, a more than 25 percent increase from our 2014 total. In 2014, Longview ranked 19th nationally compared to other cities of comparable size, and the state of Texas was awarded a 2014 National Night Out, 2014 State Cup. We have not received our 2015 ranking from national organizations as they are still waiting on reports, but I think I can speak for city councilmen when I say increasing our number of parties by 25 percent is a tremendous achievement. So please join me in recognizing this dedicated team of employees. Thank you, Sean. I just want to take a moment to recognize what an achievement this is for our community, 108 parties across our community, 25 percent increase. That is one of those things that takes a true commitment from both you all, city staff, and our city. And you know, the citizens are recognizing this does make a difference. And you know what? You guys make a huge difference for us. We appreciate you so much, all your dedication, all your hard work, and this is just the beginning. So from the bottom of our hearts, citizens of Longview, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Snapping? I'm not standing like John. I'm just not. Thank you, guys. Ladies, thank you so much.
You know, as they exit the room, it really is significant, a 25 percent increase over last year, and we did well last year, but it just shows how we are truly going to come together as a city, and we're going to combat these issues that are facing us right now. We're going to do it together, and that's how you win. When we're together, we won't be defeated. Thank you all so, so much. Okay, citizen comment. I have one speaker card. Sandy Ariza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Sandy Ariza. I live in District 4, and I'm speaking on behalf of a group called Save Hensley Park. We have about 590 members at present. Earlier this year, this governing body ratified a document called the Comprehensive Plan. I would now like to quote from that document. "This is a resource that decision-makers can use to help move our community forward in the direction that residents have said they want to go. It is the roadmap for our future journey as a community." End quote. Well, I've been studying the Comprehensive Plan, and I found some data that has made me question the Hensley Park development deal. Here's something that I found interesting. Longview currently has 1.41 acres of retail space per 100 people. A city that meets the retail needs of its local population and neighboring communities typically has .6 or .7 retail acres per 100 people. So here in Longview, we have twice that amount. In contrast, when I looked at the data on our parks, I saw that we have only 7.88 acres of parkland per 1,000 people, when the recommended amount is 15.5 acres of parkland per 1,000 people. So we have two times the recommended amount of retail, but only half the recommended amount of parkland. The Comprehensive Plan states that we want to create an overall balanced land use pattern, and we don't have that currently, and this development deal would just further to intensify the imbalance. Now, some people would argue that this development is a perfect opportunity because we're going to get a brand-new glorious park that will be built for us by the developers, and on top of that, we get a new retail outlet, but it's not a perfect plan. There's no significant gain in acreage and parkland, and if we move the park, we must clearcut the site, which is very heavily wooded, to build the new softball fields, and the retail development at Hensley will also require clearing. This will destroy the natural habitat. This habitat is populated with indigenous pine trees and native canopy trees. One of the goals in the Comprehensive Plan was to, and I'm quoting here, "enhance Longview's natural beauty and preserve its natural resources, including indigenous pine trees and native canopy trees." End quote. We cannot both allow this development and fulfill that goal of preserving our natural beauty and our natural resources. I am not anti-development, nor am I anti-revenue for the city. I want Longview to be economically healthy and vibrant and prosperous, but this proposal is not consistent with the goals from the Comprehensive Plan, and I urge all voting citizens of Longview to vote against the Hensley Park project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have no more speaker cards. Would anyone else like to speak and fill out a card?
Bless you, Lisa.
Okay, very well. We're to presentation items. This is a presentation of the Gregg County Master Gardeners for their outstanding volunteer service in restoring and improving the J.R. Curtis Memorial Garden for the Blind at the Mont Cobb Activity Center. Ms. Laura Hill, please come forward. I know, but I'm presenting to you, aren't I?
No.
Presenting to them. Well, gardeners, come on up. Y'all, please come up. I'm going to read this information for you all. "The master gardeners are members of the local community who take an active interest not only in their own, but also the community's lawns, trees, shrubs, flowers, and gardens. They are enthusiastic, willing to learn, and help others in communicate with many diverse groups. What really sets them apart from home gardeners is their special horticulture training. In exchange for this intense training, persons receiving their master gardener certification contribute their time as volunteers, working through the county extension office to provide horticultural-related information to their communities. On July 22, 2014, members of the Gregg County Master Gardeners Association met with the Mont Cobb Activity and Complex staff to discuss the J.R. Curtis Jr. Memorial Garden for the Blind and the potential for two entities to work together to refresh this important area of the complex. The Master Gardeners Association thankfully agreed to assume the responsibility for the gardening beginning October 1st of 2014. Now, one year later, and with thousands of volunteer hours invested in the maintenance and care of the garden area, plants have been removed, replaced, relocated, reorganized, and groomed, resulting in this spectacular display. The city of Longview would like to provide special recognition to the Gregg County Master Gardeners Association for their dedication and expertise in assuming the responsibility for refurbishing and maintaining the J.R. Curtis Jr. Memorial Garden for the Blind. Thank you for creating such a stunning vista for the citizens of Longview and visitors to our community."
Ma'am. I have a question before I present the plaque. Have any of you all been to this and seen this magnificent display of Mont Cobb? If you haven't, you must go out there. It is a true breath of fresh air in Longview. It is beautiful. It's so peaceful, so serene, and you all did a masterful job at renovating this. It is just fantastic. So, "in special recognition of Gregg County Master Gardeners Association for their dedication to assume the responsibility for refurbishing and maintaining J.R. Curtis Jr. Memorial Garden for the Blind presented to the city of Longview by the city of Longview October 2015." Did y'all catch that? For refurbishing, and here's the heart of maintaining. You know, anybody can go out and plant something, make it look really good for a couple of weeks, but if you don't maintain it and keep it weeded and keep it watered and keep it fresh, it loses in a hurry. So that's where I really, my hat's off to you all for this dedication, the service. This is huge for Longview. We appreciate you all so, so very much for taking your time and your talents to help our community grow. Thank you all so very much. Okay, you get to hold the plaque. Wonderful job. Thank you all so much.
What we sometimes fail to remember is that the majority, and not the majority, but a great number of people that come to Mont Cobb are from out of town, and this is such a visual aesthetically pleasing area when they come and visit Mont Cobb. It's a great reflection of our community, and I just once again applaud you all for the time and the effort you put into this and making Longview a much better place to be. Thank you all so much. Okay. I need Sharon Tress with the Women's Center to come forward, please.
Shannon was not available to come today, so I'm standing in. My name is Kelly Horn.
Kelly, we're so happy that you're here. I'm going to read a proclamation. This is a proclamation regarding National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2015. Whereas the Women's Center of East Texas requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 2015 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Longview, and whereas the Women's Center of East Texas is focusing on ending violence by providing safe haven, crisis intervention, and comprehensive support services to victims of domestic violence. And now therefore, I, Andy Mack, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Longview. Thank you all so much for what you do. This is a cause that isn't always looked at because of its degree and its nature, but it needs to be in the forefront. We need to be aware of it, and we thank you all so much for your true work in helping this to become more evident for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I should have just stayed up here. This is great. Okay. My 4-H volunteers, come on up. How many of y'all knew this was 2015 National 4-H Week?
I did.
Because I got a call. Y'all come up. How are you? Good to see you. How are you? Good to see you. All been good? Thank you. Okay, what a good-looking group of kids, young adults. Adults. Okay, 2015 National 4-H Week, October 4th through the 10th, 2015. Whereas the 4-H Youth Development Program requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 4th to the 10th, 2015 as National 4-H Week in the city of Longview. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans, and through its innovation and inspiring programs continues to build character and instill the values that have made our state strong and great. And now therefore, I, Andy Mack, by the power vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, do proclaim October 4th to the 10th, 2015 as National 4-H Week in Longview. Thank you all for your participation and for being up here with me. It's kind of hard to be up here, isn't it? I agree. I'm with you. Thank you all. Thank you. Y'all hold this. Come on and give a picture. Thank you all. Okay. Public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Dr. Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you an update on public safety since our last meeting. I'd like to start out by talking about an operation that we assisted our code enforcement officers with through developmental services towards the end of September. We ran a violation sweep in the Tammy Lynn area. The focus of this sweep here was junk and litter, junk vehicles, high weeds. Through that operation, there were 63 notices that were issued of violations that resulted in 51 investigations, and we also served one city warrant during this operation. I've attached some pictures here for you to look at, just to kind of give you an idea of what the different violations were that they addressed during this operation, and that was, I talked to Michael Shirley, and it was real good. It was real receptive by the citizens. Some of them didn't know that some of the things going on in that neighborhood were violations, and I think that working with development services and the PAR officers, we can make an impact and clean some of these areas up. So we did that with them towards the end of September. I'd also tonight like to thank the Woodman of the World Fraternal Organization here in Longview Lodge 194. They were gracious enough to donate to the police department $2,000 to help support our K-9 unit, and that'll be money well spent to help support our four-legged friends there, Indio Bajeras and Dallo, that are police K-9 dogs, so we appreciate their donation and helping to support the department. Also yesterday, I'd like to talk a little bit about some operations that we had yesterday. We executed a search warrant in the 1,300 block of El Paso Street yesterday, and this is just a little snapshot of what we seized during that execution of that search warrant. We ended up seizing over 283 grams of powdered cocaine, three grams of methamphetamines, 10 grams of crack cocaine, three grams of ecstasy, 38 grams of Xanax, and 48 grams of marijuana. Also seized was $3,900 in cash and a stolen weapon. Just to kind of give you a rough idea on all of that illegal narcotics that were seized, it would have a street value close to $35,000. Also later on, shortly after doing that, we were able to assist the Smith County Sheriff's Office in serving a warrant in the 2,200 block of 15th Street stemming from a homicide at Bunny's Truck Stop over there in Smith County. So again, this is how, working in cooperation with the other agencies here, we can help each other by dealing with some of these incidents that we're having. Also, during the week, we've had several requests for us to try to look at and develop better ways of educating the community on some of the issues that we're having with our current gangs and issues that we're having. So we're exploring some different options to create some information and push that out either via Facebook or through our website so that we can make that available for the citizens that might be interested in educating themselves a little better on what's going on. And also, I'd like to close by just giving a little recap on National Night Out. Of course, that was Tuesday night. I too want to thank the PAR officers and Partners in Prevention. I know you recognize them for their service for National Night Out. I've been here 26 years and very active in National Night Out, and this year here, I feel like this was probably one of the best ones that we've ever had. And I certainly appreciate the support of council. Several council members rode with the officers. Some of the council members held parties. Council members were at other parties, so I appreciate the support of the council, and also appreciate the support of the city and hall, the fire department, all the other city departments that came out last night and helped support and make this a great event. I had 111 parties, so we'll go somewhere between 108 and 111.
111 is.
We'll get an official count. But here's just some pictures from Tuesday night. The Boys and Girls Club had a great carnival party down there. Really had a great time seeing the kids participate in different games and food, and they had made banners for the police department and the fire department, and I brought mine back and hung it up on the wall down there in the police station. So Zonta had a crime watch party at the train depot. And then there was other various parties that occurred throughout the day and evening throughout the city. One of the things that we do do is on National Night Out is we give an award for the best crime watch group that's out there, and this year, the winner of that was the Lincoln Square Neighborhood Crime Watch Group. This group was reestablished in 1994. It was a group that met occasionally, but it had fallen off and it was reestablished. Howard Swan is the current captain of that group, and Howard went out and took it upon himself to bring the group back together, and they have had a neighborhood meeting four times a year since 1994. This is not the first time that Lincoln Square won the best crime watch group. They also won it in 2011 as well. This is a great group of folks that worked very closely with our PAR officer Kendrick Montgomery and the police department, and they were kind of bragging last night that, you know, they keep up with what's going on in their neighborhood, and they had very few incidents that were occurring in their neighborhood, and they contributed that to their involvement as a neighborhood crime watch group.
Chief, that was a great party. I was at that party for a while, and I enjoyed seeing the interaction of both the PAR officers and the firemen that were there. There were two young firemen there that were there with one of the ambulances, and they let some of the kids come up and sit in the ambulance, and I can tell you the excitement on their face, you know? They made friends for life that day with these young kids, and you know, that's what it's about. You make friends, you gain trust, and that's what these whole parties were themed on, but it was a great time out, good food, good fellowship, glad to see our community responding in this way. So thank you so much for all that you all did.
Thank you, and we appreciate y'all's support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And a good week this week, Chief. Thank you. Chief Tillman, talk to us.
Mayor Mack, councilman Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity. Again, before I get into this, I just want to echo with Chief Bishop, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to get involved with a National Night Out. Every year, and it never fails, I'll have six or seven parties circled on my list, and I think I made it to two this year, because once I get there, I get so involved with talking to so many of the neighbors that are out, and that time just goes by. I know I spent a lot of time down in Meta Downs at the one in District 3, and I actually made it to Ms. Ishar's party there at her house and had such a great time just visiting with her neighbors. So we appreciate the opportunity to get involved. I'm going to throw this one up in front of you every time between now and the end of the year. This is just to get the community aware that our open enrollment is currently underway for our EMS subscription program, our ambulance subscription program. This is where for $70 a year, your basic out-of-pocket expenses for any type of use of our EMS services here in the city, you get it for that low price. So it's a great plan to be a part of, and the thing that I want to stress is because of the way the state regulates these programs, we're only able to have our open enrollment open from October the 1st to December the 31st. You'd be amazed how many people called the first week of January wanting to sign up, and we had to defer them all the way to October. So I want to stress this at the beginning of every council meeting between now and the end of December, just to make people aware that this is currently underway.
Chief, is that per residence or per?
That's per household. So any qualified resident that lives in that household is covered by that $70. Good question. I'm not sure, am I doing this or you doing this?
Yeah.
Okay. Another thing, I just want to tout a little bit, we are so privileged to, here in the community, be able to partner up with so many different stakeholders. This is a photo from the Think Pink event that was sponsored by Good Shepherd Medical Center last week at Mont Cobb. We had the opportunity, there's such a close relation with cancer awareness and firefighters. Cancer is the number one, well, it's becoming closer to be the number one killer of firefighters, unfortunately, just because of all the toxic environments that we enter into, that we expose ourselves to over such a long period of time, that it creates so many chronic health conditions. So it's important to us that we get to partner up. This is just a picture of the crew that worked that event, on volunteer time, most of them, being able to bus tables, serve food, and just interact with all the people that came to participate in that. So we just want to express our thanks to Good Shepherd for them allowing us to be a part of this. I know I was at the proclamation that you read for the Pink Hills following this on Friday. We've got some skin in that game, too. We have several members that participate with that, and our people get such a charge out of being able to go and see somebody's face light up, just to know, if it's nothing more than reaching out and giving them that hug, to know that, hey, you live in a community where we support you, and we're in this together. So we thank Good Shepherd for the opportunity of Pink Hills to partner up with them. Another thing that a lot of people may not realize is we're able to partner up with Texas Eastmen every year. They do an annual firefighting school in their facility out south of town, and they've been doing this for, gosh, a number of years. I know I've been involved with it personally since about 1987, where you get to get some hands-on, real-time, real-life industrial firefighting practice. They'll go through a series of evolutions, burning some pretty complex fires. Now, a lot of this is not your run-of-the-mill, the everyday types of fires that we respond to here in the city, but we certainly have the potential with the heavy base oil and gas industry that we have here in town to have these fires outside of a chemical plant setting like this. So rotating our people through here and fighting some of these pretty intense fires, and this is a regional school, so we get a lot of participation from the whole northeast Texas region, and even a lot of participation from western Louisiana. People come in to go to this school. It actually runs the weekend. It's all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and these are the Monday night evolutions. So several of our people either serve as instructors or participated with this school as students. And probably the thing that I'm most proud of, if you had the opportunity to see the newspaper today, we've been working on for close to a year now a partnership with Cubro College and Longview Independent School District, and a lot of this was a charge that Councilwoman Ishar gave, and I've had several conversations with Councilwoman Williams, and I hope she's seen this story today, to figure out a way to get into the school and I hope she's seen this story today, to figure out a way to get into the school classrooms at the high school level to introduce the fire service as a career potential for students that are looking and trying to decide what they want to do after graduation. And because of, because of the collaboration that we're able to get in with Qable College and LISD, they are offering an EMT class basically now that you can start at the sophomore level, and by the time you graduate high school, you can spend that following summer after graduation doing some clinical time that the students will do with us, and be eligible to challenge and get their state certification as an EMT. Now for that, that, us, that's important because that's kind of step one in a career in emergency service and emergency response. You know, most of these students will tell you that when they got in this program a year ago, they were thinking about a career in the health field, in the facility setting, in a nursing home, in a hospital, in a doctor's office, and never even realizing that a career in pre-hospital emergency care in EMS or the fire department was even an option. So being able to get, to get with these students, and it's no secret, in our department, we've struggled with our diversity for several years, and this is just, in my mind, the next step of us being able to open up our profession to those diverse populations in our city to say, hey, this is a career option for you, too. It's not just for this group of people or that group of people. This is, this is something that's, that's great for everybody if they're interested. So we're really excited about where this is, is likely to go, and it's just going to take a little bit of time, but the students were, they, they were pretty well fired up when they realized, you know, hey, there's a chance that I could, I could ride on that fire engine one day or work in the back of that ambulance. So we were certainly happy to be a part of that. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thanks for the opportunity.
Comments first. First off, chief, thank you for, I'm telling, do y'all not enjoy these updates? Did you know these kind of things? Because I didn't, and I think I'm pretty much in the know. And, and I don't know all these, and I thank you for taking the time to update us. I hope my wife had got that number about that ambulance deal back there, because I want to be sure to sign up. But thank you for participating in the parties, chief. I know you wanted to go to six, you went to two. You know why you only went to two? Because people want to talk to you. They want to see you out there, just like I know Chief Bishop was out there. The community loves seeing you there, being present. It makes them feel comfortable, and you all are so open to visit with them, and it, it just speaks volumes that we are going to have, and we already, I feel like, have the best public safety sector anywhere. And I thank you for what you guys are doing. Y'all are just ramping it up day after day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we're to the consent agenda. Is there any items council would like to remove for discussion on separate consideration?
No difference.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Oh, okay, I skipped one, but we're still to the consent agenda. We're okay. All right. No, I didn't skip it on purpose. Discussion item. Discuss the mobile food vending service options for the City of Longview, Ms. Laura Hill, Director of Community Services. Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Willard. Tonight, we're here to present Food Trucks 101 to just get you to start thinking about bringing this new service industry into Longview, okay? I'm going to show you some pictures. I did shamelessly steal some from the Food Network's The Great Food Truck Race, because when people start thinking about food trucks, this is what they're thinking of, the size truck and the type of food, the gourmet food truck. We've done a lot of research. Mr. Moore has gone with us to some training. The National League of Cities has issued a white paper on this industry, which is really thriving on the east coast and the west coast, not so much in the south or the central portion of the United States. But this white paper is designed to help cities navigate and bring in this industry to their communities, because it does require a lot of changes and adaptations to ordinances. And this white paper does define this as mobile food vendors utilize large vehicles packed with high-tech cooking equipment and sanitation devices to provide sophisticated, safe, that's what I like, safe food, usually prepared to order. So we already have assistance from the National League of Cities. These are just some pictures showing you some concepts from the Food Network. We've got different sized trucks. Certainly, they're wrapped uniquely. And then we're going to move into the interiors. These mobile kitchens are customized to the menu, and I'm going to show you something in a minute where a waffle truck is trying to grill, and he's not doing too well. We have commercial interiors that provide for improved workflow and sanitation. We are recommending, based on information we've learned, that when people decide to get into this business, they plan for growth and menu expansion. Don't limit yourself. And they must be totally self-contained with water, fuel, storage, food preparation, serving options, et cetera. So here are some interiors, and you're going to hopefully notice they are commercial, so they're easy to clean, they're easy to navigate, three to four people working inside of them. These, these young ladies won the Great Food Truck Race, so. This is another layout for, from a unit that's for sale, and you can see it has a deep fat fryer. All of them have that. It depends on what your menu is, as to what you want to create. Now, some of the challenges, and there are challenges that we will have to help control for, we do, or we will need to require commercial vehicles that meet all necessary codes and that are appropriately designed for the planned menu options and future growth that will benefit both the operator and the various inspectors. So we're going to have fire code, certainly, food safety, traffic safety, et cetera. Fire is important, so we've already worked with the Fire Marshal's Office. He's drafted the criteria he's looking at, because these trucks cook with propane. This is a mobility issue. They had an engine fire. This was the gentleman I talked about. They had a waffle truck during the contest, and they were having to cook, I think, rabbit sausage, and they did not win, because he had to adapt his cooking. Another part of bringing food trucks to Longview is the requirement that they work out of commissaries. And I found this description of a full-service commissary in Dallas, and these are some of the amenities they provide. Now, this is certainly not required. It's just a selling point. Certainly having a grease trap and gray water disposal would be critical for us, because we want to maintain our standards locally. These are some pictures of some commissaries, just large commercial kitchen space that these food trucks work out of, doing food prep, getting ready to go out each day. This is a commissary, actually in California. This gentleman's cleaning the truck. They go back every evening, and they're cleaned, they're restocked, they're sanitized, they've got, their propane is, is filled, water tanks are filled. This is all the food trucks back at the commissary. They have power that they can plug into overnight, so they're, they're not running off their generators. This is, the food trucks are out during the day, that's the power poles waiting for them to come back. We went out and looked at the National Restaurant Association, and they are realizing through some surveys that there are some restaurateurs who consider food trucks as competition. We can expect that. But some operators view the trucks as opportunities for established restaurants to expand both their operations and their presence in the community. Mobile food service has been and will continue to be a good way of extending an existing brand beyond the four walls of a restaurant. And we have received some contacts from some local restaurant owners interested in getting into the business. They want to move around and, and get out and meet the community, so that interest is there. We are going to be asking you to create a committee, task force, with a very finite mission to assist us in navigating through this, because we do have some questions that we need to customize as what's right for Longview, you know? We've, we've learned a lot. Everybody has to comply with the state food regs, that's no question. You have to comply, comply with the fire code, no question. But these are some things that we do need input on. For example, should there be a distance requirement for brick-and-mortar restaurants? Some cities have it, some cities don't. What's right for Longview? What type of truck should be allowed? Should there be a requirement for restroom access with distance requirements? Should there be location restrictions, number of hours per location? For example, do you want food trucks in residentially zoned areas? Probably not, but you for sure want it in retail, commercial. It's up to us. Should we have different levels of vending? Food preparation all the way down to snow cones? Well, we have snow cones, so. These are some of the questions, these are the variables we've learned from looking at other cities, and this is where we're not getting a real good feel as standardization, so this means it's our choice. We are taking the liberty of suggesting a partial committee, Councilman Moore, because he did go to the training voluntarily, David Choi, who is currently the president of the East Texas Restaurant Association, Kathy Case, who's a retired restaurant owner, and Eric Dean, who is a potential food truck operator and currently owns a restaurant, and then two to four other appointees, or as many as is your pleasure. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'm not asking for a decision tonight, so.
Any questions, Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
The thing that, would you go back to this commissary? I don't quite understand it.
For want of a better term, a commissary is kind of like the mothership. Every food truck, they can't operate out of a home or a non-permitted kitchen, so they need to go back to somewhere that's permitted that can, go back one more slide, please, Angie. Usually it's a gated lot, they have surveillance cameras for security. The main thing is a community kitchen where they can store fruits, vegetables, meats, because they can't hold it all in their truck, okay? Cold and dry storage space, certainly access to power to run them overnight. Okay, excellent. Possibly a truck bay wash. We need a grease trap and gray water disposal, so, because if they use water, for example, in their sink on their truck, it stays in the truck they have to dump at night. They need access to propane and ice, possibly mechanical services. So trucks go back to these locations that are permitted and inspected by the city to guarantee sanitation requirements are met.
So what, in other words, you would have to have the commissary then, before you could have a food truck out on the road? Is that?
Correct.
Who puts in the commissaries?
Whoever wants to, and we've already had some people inquiring about putting them in.
Okay, so they would be?
It's private.
You could have an independent food truck, but he would go to the commissary and kind of pay them for, for whatever needs to be done there?
Correct.
Okay, so you have to have, would it be possible for the commissary to be in a, in a different location, maybe like in Tyler or Shreveport or someplace like that? Can they run out of a commissary that's not local?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All we would need to see is that they came out of that commissary, and we know that commissary is permitted and inspected by another health authority.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't have a question, I just want to make a comment. Really excited about it. Thank you for bringing this to our attention and moving forward with it, and Kevin Hawkins back there would probably be another good committee appointee if he would be willing.
Whatever you wish.
So.
Yeah, this is an excellent opportunity to introduce a, a whole new dining experience to the community and, and give an opportunity for entrepreneurs to start, start their own business.
A commissary perhaps, in Longview.
You know, it's, it's a hugely popular thing to do elsewhere in the state and the nation, and I think the task force idea is, is good. Looking forward to it.
Do we have a time scheduled on the task force?
No, we don't, Mr. Allen. Not yet.
Two months, six months?
Sooner rather than later.
Okay, okay.
But I cannot define sooner yet.
Okay.
If it is your pleasure, we would come back to the meeting on October 29th, at which time you could appoint your task force, and, you know, if that's how you wish to proceed. And then from that point, we would begin meeting and reviewing ordinances and what needs to be put in place so we can roll this out.
And Mr. Karen, I would maybe suggest you sound out, maybe a member of your parks board to be on this task force.
I do have two speaker cards on this issue. I'd like to allow them to speak on this discussion item. Don Raiford?
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I speak in behalf of myself as a potential and soon-to-be food truck owner, and also the Dan Blocker Petroleum Consultants of the company I work for. Mrs. Kathy Blocker Page is back here. She is one of the owners and my immediate supervisor. We have a facility behind our office that would be excellent for a commissary, and I've talked to Buck and some of the guys there, and I've seen, I saw, I guess, a bunch of y'all at that meeting in Tyler, and thank y'all for taking the time to, to attend that meeting. We're exploring possibilities on what we can do, and I'm just here to say that I'd asked for your consideration in approving the food truck business in Longview. I think it'd be a tremendous asset, not only to the community, but to entrepreneurs such as myself that would like to expand what we're doing in a different direction.
Thank you, sir. Hank Gukler? And I know I didn't pronounce that right, Hank, I'm sorry. But your handwriting is terrible.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Managers, Citizens of Longview. I came here loaded for bear, but this is very encouraging. I find the attitude towards the potential of the food trucks very, very positive. The only thing that I'd like to comment on is when Shirley made her presentation is that she correctly indicated that it's, it's not an easy thing to, to legislate, for lack of a better word. Tyler, in earlier this year, KLTV reported in April the passing of their ordinance. Now, I'm not sure if that's exactly when the ordinance happened, and at the time, there was one food truck operating in Tyler. So that's quite a while ago, and today, there's one food truck operating in Tyler. I think a similar situation in Longview should be avoided. There are some other things that are not very clear for some reason, and, and don't, don't quote me on this, but apparently food trucks are allowed in the city of Tyler, trailers are not, which is really strange, because the only difference is one of them is self-propelled and the other one requires a truck to tow. So, and you know, it's not my, my position to say, but I like to volunteer to be on that committee. I know that you have a couple of spots left, because I am not a food operator. I have the business experience. I currently own, co-owner of XL Jet Management at the Greck County Airport. My partner and I opened and had a retail shop for six years on Tyler Street, so I have a little bit of experience to bring to the table. I might want to get involved in the food truck business myself, but I think, you know, and pun intended, if the city would go give the go-ahead and to change the zoning of the vending to make this possible, then I think the go-giving back would be tenfold. And as was mentioned before, this is a great incubator, this is a wonderful opportunity for entrepreneurs, and I know you've heard it all before, $100 spent on local businesses in your own community goes a long way, as opposed to 100 bucks spent on a national chain or worse, 100 bucks spent outside of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. Council, I will, I will charge you with bringing forth this task force, but I also want to, it's not a caution, it's a concern. With any task force, we have to have opposing views, and, and right now, we can't load the task force up with people that just are in favor of this. It's not, that's not the way we can do business, so. And I'm not asking for there to be a fight, but we have to give fair dialogue to both sides of this issue, because not everyone will be in favor of this issue. And so we must be very judicious in what we're going to do in appointing people that will be open-minded, that will be civil, that will accomplish what we're asking to be accomplished, and that's to bring back to us some sort of a recommendation. And so I, I urge you to think this through, and let's, let's be fair and equal when we, when we put this together, because I think that's the only way we can go forward with a, with a clear conscience and have a clear view of what the citizens of Longview so desire, okay?
Mayor, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, we need, we need to get this right from the get-go and do it, do it right, so. I mean, we need to get this right from the get-go, and do it right, so.
Thank you.
Point well made.
Ms. Hill, thank you for your presentation. Okay. Anyone else that needs to speak on this issue that did not have a chance to fill out a Thank you so much. Okay, we're to zoning now. We will have a public hearing to be held, consider application Z-15-16. Ms. Self, nice to see you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. Thank you, Counsel, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting a rezone, oh, I'm sorry, I'm the mouse runner here. There we go. The applicant is requesting a rezone from single-family SF5 to heavy commercial C2. Currently, the property is in the 900 block of McCann Road, and is being used for retail and commercial, but is currently zoned SF5. When a new tenant applied for a certificate of occupancy in this leased space, staff discovered that the parcel had never been rezoned, like all the properties adjacent to it. Therefore, rezoning to C2 will make it consistent with the surrounding uses and bring the property into compliance. The comprehensive plan designates this area for retail. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers?
I do have a question.
Please.
Yes.
Now, we're going to rezone it to heavy industrial, or heavy?
To C2, heavy commercial, yes.
Okay.
For consistency with the surrounding uses.
So is heavy commercial considered retail?
Retail can be in heavy commercial, but retail has its own use category.
Okay.
It's a more intensive use, commercial is, but you can put retail or lesser uses in commercial.
Okay, it's just the land use is for retail, I mean, correct, or the plan?
Right, that's the future land use map, yeah, but currently, the current zoning map, all that area around it is already zoned commercial.
Okay.
You can go down, you just can't go up.
Right.
You couldn't put commercial in retail, you can put retail in commercial.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Public hearing is now closed. Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z-15-17. Ms. Self.
All right, the applicant is requesting a rezone from agricultural to heavy commercial C2 on the subject property on Delroy Street. This property was annexed in 2009 and automatically assigned an agricultural designation at that time. Currently, the applicant owns the property right here, and his plan is to, and this is an automotive repair and sales facility, he plans to, or he'd like to move his facility over here for sales and demolish the existing structure that's on this property. I got some pictures here. So demolish this structure and then move his business to that site. State Highway 31 is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for heavy commercial uses. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Are there any speakers? Yes, please.
I'm referencing that property, this is one of the bridges. The other property, you want to build another property, I own. We bought that property, we'll tear it down and start over, put a metal building in it that I own property.
You're going to tear that existing structure down?
Yeah, just start all over.
I hate to see that go, not that I've ever been there before.
I've never been there before.
Not until I was younger.
We have an experience about the, prior to cheaper, just to tear it down and start over.
Okay, very good. Any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That used to be the best road speed sandwich.
Yes, sir. I have been there many times. A public hearing is now held to consider application PD-15-12. Ms. Self.
Okay, the applicant is requesting a rezone from planned development general retail mixed use to planned development general retail for a convenience store with a restaurant, gasoline station, and car wash. The property is located on the corner of Hawkins and Tryon off the new East Hawkins extension. The planned development site plan includes a convenience store of approximately 5,300 square feet, a car wash of about 1,000 square feet, and 10, approximately 10 fueling stations. The site meets parking requirements for a convenience store, which is one parking space per 200 square feet, and for the restaurant, which is one parking space per three persons, based on maximum occupancy. Hawkins Parkway is a minor arterial, and Tryon is a collector. Both are appropriate for this type of development, provided access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding areas. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers? Any question for Ms. Self?
Do you receive any feedback at the P&amp;Z meeting on that?
Yes, we actually had two residents that came out, one that owns this property here and has plans to develop it in the future, but wasn't very specific, and then one of the property owners here that was concerned about the traffic.
No speakers, no questions. Public hearing is now closed. Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing now held to consider M-15-04. Ms. Self.
Lots of pictures, okay. All right. Planning and zoning staff is proposing amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article 8-104, which is our recreational and entertainment uses table. Staff is proposing to change the entitled amusement commercial indoor use to just amusement indoor, removing the commercial, to add a new category in the table for bowling alleys, and then to change the definition to indoor amusement and removing the language concerning bowling alleys and billiard parlors, parlor's, excuse me. In the zoning case last year, the billiard parlor has already been removed and added as its own line item in the use table. In addition, we're proposing to allow amusement indoor in general retail with a specific use permit, and then, of course, by right in light and heavy commercial and light and heavy industrial districts. Amending the uses and definitions will allow certain indoor amusements with general retail zoning, while still retaining some of the city's oversight by requiring the specific use permit. One of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to seek development of additional family-friendly entertainment venues and recreational amenities. This amendment, by allowing these types of venues to be located in general retail zoning districts with an SUP, gives more opportunities and flexibility for developers. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Public hearing is now open. Mr. Allen.
Ms. Self, on the, you're removing bowling alleys and putting that in a separate category?
Yes.
Will that make it more difficult in the future to put in a bowling alley?
It will make it as difficult as it was when it was amusement commercial indoor, so it will be required, continue to be required only in commercial, whereas the indoor amusements will be allowed in general retail with a specific use permit.
Is there a reason for that? That you only, that you have to have commercial, but yet you can have an amusement in general retail?
Well, if you think of general retail amusement, or amusement, indoor amusement, that would be more along the lines of laser tag, yeah.
I just wonder, are you kind of discouraging somebody that might be interested in putting in a bowling alley by putting a higher requirement on them?
Well, it is the existing requirement now, but I suppose so. I mean, that's, it is consistent with the billiard parlor.
I just, I really don't see that much difference between an indoor amusement park and a bowling alley. Would it have to do with, I don't guess, the bowling alley, can they serve alcoholic beverages?
Yes, sir.
And where amusement park would not?
Likely not, correct.
But they could if they asked for a permit?
Not in general retail zoning.
Not in general retail? Okay, I just had a little concern about the regulation aspect of that.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any other discussion? Any speakers on this discussion item? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries and noted.
Thank you.
Okay, we're to the action items. Consider resolution nominating candidate the Greck County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Counsel, before you, the counsel appointments committee has met earlier, and the recommendation is in front of you, and that recommendation is for us to reappoint David McQuarter as our representative to the Greck Appraisal District, and I would just like to say, thank you for, committee for meeting and bringing this recommendation forth, but thank you for David McQuarter's willingness to serve. David is a former mayor of this community, and he understands the importance and the issues with the Greck County Appraisal and how that affects our sales tax revenues, and he's a very clear, concise thinker, and I think he's a good businessman, and I think he's a very good candidate to be in our, as our representative.
Mayor and Counsel, just to, for everybody to be clear, we will be coming back again. This is for his nomination to that board, and we'll have to come back, should you nominate Mr. McQuarter, we'll have to come back in December, I think it is, once the full slate of candidates will be there, if the other entities will nominate.
Because we actually have, it's been 10 years, but I know we get to appoint one, and then we have additional votes that we can cast towards another one, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The way I understand it, according to the size of the entities that are, participate with Greck County Appraisal District, you're assigned so many votes.
Right.
Depending on the size of your tax base.
So we have one vote for us?
We can assure one slot, for sure, and then...
And then we have additional votes for another candidate if we want to partner with someone else.
Right, so tonight, we'll be making the nomination.
It's just a motion for a nomination.
Yes, sir, and then we'll come back.
It's not an affirmation yet.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Correct. Everybody clear with that?
Good.
Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Wait, we out of motion? Or we just move in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider a resolution naming the Miracle Field at WG Bill Lear Park in honor of Gene Allen. Scott Karen.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to present the name of the Miracle Field, which will be named in honor of Gene Allen, who was instrumental in AmBucks, as well as the introduction of the AmTrak, which you see there on the right side of the screen. So the Miracle Field, if you have not been out to see Lear Park yet, is currently under construction. They held the groundbreaking out there earlier this fall, and it is well underway to being opened next year, so we're excited for that opportunity. So the Parks Advisory Board has recommended the name for Gene Allen for that field, and we have advertised, and we've not received any additional comments or concerns on, or additional names. So staff recommends approval of Gene Allen Field.
Counsel, any questions, discussion? We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Book club time. We do have a video tonight, correct? Sean?
This week, we're discussing the third law as a go-giver. It is, your influence is determined by how abundantly you place other people's interests first. To me, this was best summarized on page 67, where it says, "Watch out for the other guy. Watch out for his interests. Watch his back. Forget about 50/50, son. 50/50 is a losing proposition. The only winning proposition is 100%. Make your win about the other person. Go after what he wants. Forget win-win, focus on the other person's win. So let's be all in and be go-givers."
I'll let y'all talk in just a minute, but I got a lot to say first. First, I want to say, thank you to Terry and Scott for taking so much time and effort to put these videos together and producing them for the community and for us to be able to promote this. And I don't know how many of y'all know, but we actually got to interview the author of the book, Bob Berg. We did a video with him and an interview, and it was absolutely, that's an energetic man. He's energetic, he's, well, he's adopted Longview as his favorite city, and so, you know, those are good things for us, for this community, to have that kind of exposure, national exposure. We were in another blog again this week, that we were mentioned again on a national blog, so, but he's such a passionate gentleman, who really lives what he's written about, and that's where I think we're seeing this more and more, and I know I'm seeing it more and more, and I'm going to discuss that with you all in a minute, but, you know, this law, it basically boils down to really how you treat others. It's kind of the golden rule, I look at it, you know, how do you want to be treated? That's what you should be treating others. And so, I've seen so many different examples of that this week in our community, and I saw it at the neighborhood watch parties, I've seen it throughout the community on social media, and our discussion Monday night was an excellent discussion. Thank you all who participated. A lot of you on the room participated, and we had great discussion Monday night. And so, are y'all seeing anything? What are you feeling on this? You've got your book open, and I'm so glad that you do.
Well, I think this is such a perfect fit, again, for city council to think about, you know, putting other people's interests first. This whole law talks about listening, thinking about what other people are bringing to you, and that is literally our job up here. That's what we are called to do, that's why we're in this role, because we want to listen to what our constituents have to say about what they want the city to be for them. It's their city, it's our job to help make it that way. So I thought this particular rule was exactly on point for what we should be doing all the time.
It's kind of like when I'm at church. I think the preacher's only preaching at me every Sunday. This law, it preaches to us up here, and it should, and it does to our city staff, and I can tell y'all, and I can tell y'all by firsthand testimonies, we are getting so many accolades from our city staff, about our city staff lately, that it just makes me feel so, so good, and it's not just one department, it's every department that is just, I get calls, and I get emails, and I get texts every day saying, "I had the greatest experience with XYZ," and I just say, "Wow." I mean, maybe it's not the book, maybe y'all are just great people, but whatever it is, it's starting to work, and I like seeing that. I like seeing the positivity that our energy is creating within our city staff, within this city council, and I think it's going to, it's going to, it has to spill over into our community, because we've got so much involvement. So I applaud all of you all for taking that initiative and doing these things and spending a little time on someone else. I know, Eddie, you were going to say something, I'm sorry, I was just, I couldn't help myself.
I noticed Ms. Nadie and I have underlined the same paragraph in our book, so I'll leave that to her. I've just got a couple of examples that I highlight this law, and to me, out of the five laws, this is the most important. One example, kind of lighthearted, but the other one, less so. Last night, when my wife and I were getting ready to go to bed, I wanted to set the alarm for 6:00 this morning. She wanted to set it for 6:30. We set it for 6:30.
That's called the law of marriage.
Yeah. Which, as I was reading this chapter, I was feeling the same thing. The second is, when I was in the Navy, I put the welfare and the needs of my men before anything, and they knew it. I told them, you know, I would be willing to do anything myself that I ask them to do. And again, they knew that. And in return for that, when we had a crisis, or we needed to handle something that was unforeseen, they gave me 125%, but we were a team, and as Ms. Ishihara said, that translates into what we're doing up here today, so.
It does.
This was my favorite chapter, I think.
Hit us, Ms. Nadie. Read it to us.
I enjoyed the chapter as well. I also noticed that you have the same word there, underlined, as I did. Yeah, great minds think alike. I do want to read this part, said, "Pendar spoke up, because if you place the other person's interests first, your interests will always be taken care of. Watch out for what other people need with the faith that, when you do, you'll get what you need." I'm a firm believer of that. I work at the Dade Center with LISD. I am constantly, constantly giving to those kids, as well as the parents, whether it's my time, whether it's knowledge, whatever the need is, and I feel great. God knows, it is better to give than to receive, so I am really enjoying this.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate that. Mr. Allen.
What Ms. Nadie said is absolutely correct. You know, you go back to the Bible, it's much better to give than or to receive, and when you give and when you take care of others, you receive. when you give and when you take care of others, you receive much more bountiful than what you think.
I have two interesting stories I'm going to share with you all. I'm sure a lot of you all know, but my older, and I stress older brother, Chris, is the president of Longview School Board, and he invited me Monday night to his meeting, their school board meeting, because he was presenting the school board members with the Go-Giver book to read and to encourage them to be involved. And he called me this morning, and he said, "Just to let you know, Dr. Wilcox ordered 50 copies for LISD." And I said, "Wow, that's just, you know, that's just one more step of getting people on the same thought, the same track." And so I text Dr. Wilcox, and I said, "Thank you for getting involved. Thank you for being involved, and I'll be happy to help with the cost of those books." And he texts me back, and he said, because I'm thinking, he's going to say, "Don't worry about it," you know? No! He texts me back, and he goes, "Great, I'll order 50 more." So, okay, I'm happy with that. So we have now 100 more people that are going to be reading this book. That's just the ripples in the pond. As the rock gets thrown in, the ripples just continue to go further and further out. And so I'm proud of you all, and I'm proud of our city. Thanks for all that who are taking part in this, and I'm going to bring one more thing to you, and then I'm going to move on. But, because I'm sure some of you all have already heard this, because I talked about it on Monday and again yesterday, but I had a very generous Longview resident contact me last week, and he said, this is a man that grew up here in Longview, grew up in South Longview, actually, and he said, "Andy, I read your book, and I joined the book club on Monday, and I was just, I was moved, and I want, I want to do something. It just tells me to be a go-giver, and how could I do something for the community? And I didn't know what I could do." And he said, "I was eating lunch the very next day, and I noticed two police officers sitting across from me," and he goes, "And then it hit me. I knew exactly what I had to do." So, and this generous donor will be present in our council chambers in a couple of weeks. He's out of town, but he will be here, and I will recognize him for this, because he has said that he will fund body cameras for every police officer and every sheriff's deputy in the city of Longview. Whatever it takes, whatever is left over from grants we have, he will fund that, as well as the software involved, to make it a reality that our police officers and our sheriff's departments will have body cameras outfitted in entirety. So there's another example of a, of a giving attitude that will pay dividends for our community 100 times over. So hats off to him, to all of you all. Thank you for participating. This is, this is far more than what I ever expected, and I'm glad to see this taking place. So, thank you all. Okay. Out of the community interest. Mr. Moore?
Two things. One, I want to apologize to the citizens of District 1 for my absence the last two meetings. I had some family obligations that I just could not avoid, and also apologize to council for my absence. Second, I want to thank the citizens of District 1 for the 16 parties they had Tuesday evening. And Chief, I want to publicly thank Officer Clayton, Par Officer for B-10, and I hope you would pass that on to him for all the hard work he does for all of us out in West Longview. I was able to attend, I don't know, maybe eight of the parties, finished up on Greenbrier, listening to 50's music. They would not let me sing, which is probably good, but I, you know, I was encouraged by the neighborhoods, people coming to the parties, had never met each other before, but they, they introduced themselves, they sat down, had fellowship, had dinner, visited with police officers that were there. You know, police department needs our help. We all know that. They can't do it alone, no matter how many cops we put on the street. And these parties are a way to foster that. I enjoyed it. I ate more hot dogs than I probably should have, but it was, it was an excellent evening, and we'll do better next year, bigger and better.
Ms. Snoddy?
I too would like to say hats off. Job well done for National Night Out. I was especially grateful to go to a party where they actually had my name written up on poster board and highlighted, welcoming me to the party. So it was a great event, a great evening. To Chief Stillman, job well done. Anytime that we can interact with LISD in the city, we should all be on board with that. So that's great. And Chief Bishop, great job. It's good to hear, finally hear some news while we're moving forward, and we're taking care of business. So hats off to you as well. Thank you.
Ms. Ishihara?
I have two things. First, can I make a motion to excuse Ms. Williams from our meeting?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
My first is, I would like to invite everyone to attend two events next week. One is the Poverty Conference on October 15th. It is 8:30 beginning on Thursday at the Belcher Center at La Terna University. We will have an amazing speaker, and Partners in Prevention is coming to do a whole bunch of our breakout sessions, so it's going to be a wonderful conference, hopefully get people motivated to get involved and help with this issue in our community. Second item is, I don't have a slide, so sorry, but on Wednesday, October 14th, is our Construction Advisory Committee meeting. It is 11:00 a.m. here in council chambers. The only issue on the agenda for discussion is a presentation about removing the annual inspection requirement for backflow devices on your residential sprinkler system. So 50% of you probably have no idea what I'm talking about. 50% of you have probably gotten a letter, gotten mad, and called somebody about it. If you got a letter, or know someone that got a letter, and got mad about it, please come to the meeting next Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. here in council chambers. That is your opportunity to speak to the committee about removing that annual inspection requirement. So it's one of those rules, if you don't come and speak, you don't get to complain about it later. This is your opportunity to come and have your voice heard about that issue. So please plan to attend. I know a number of our council members will be there. I know there are a large number of our citizens that will be there, but please plan to attend if you have an opinion on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
I'd like to tell you about a go-giver in District 5. I think a lot of you know, either know Carmella Davis, or have seen her signs around town. And I don't know how many of you, I certainly didn't know about it, the Great Christmas Light Fight. And Carmella puts on a light show for the entire community of Longview. I don't know if her neighbors are real happy about it, but she does it every year, and she was nominated to be in the Great Christmas Light Fight, and it's some kind of reality TV show or something.
And they're coming to film it.
And they're coming to film it. She was nominated, and I believe her husband told me there are eight houses that get, that win a nomination around the country. So Carmella's been nominated, and on October 28th, they're going to have the great lighting, and they're going to be there and film it, and it'd be great to see everybody out there. Her neighborhood might not think so, but I think it'd be great.
Thanks, Mr. Wright. Mr. Allen?
Wow. Christmas is starting early, on October 28th. That's interesting. On the National Night Out. It was a wonderful event. I've participated in before. This year, I did something different. I rode with one of the officers. I'd like to thank Ms. Mitzi Ryan, who's the Par Officer at the Longview Mall. It was very fortunate that I was able to ride with her, and actually, my little eight-year-old grandson was able to go along with us, although he was, if you're under 13, you cannot ride in the front seat. So he had to ride in the back, and he was wondering if he would get handcuffs, but she said, "No." But anyway, it's a wonderful opportunity for the community to visit your neighbors, to visit with the police department, the fire department, and I think everybody was involved, and I just want to say thank you for all the work and effort that goes into it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Willard?
Mayor, I appreciate going with Chief Bishop in his police vehicle the other night to our parties, and I wanted to clear up a rumor that I was in the front seat of the car all night and not in the backseat. That's been going around. I want to make sure everybody, everybody knows that. Right, Chief? Okay.
Thank you, sir. And just a quick, I guess, challenge, just because I know the LISD president, I'm challenging other, other school districts to get involved with this Go-Giver book too. So Spring Hill, Pine Tree, Halsville, I'll be there, help you if you can, anything I can do. Now, I want to remind you about the mayor's challenge to donate bottled water, sports drinks, new box car seats, and new smoke and carbon CO2 detectors. We'd like you to thank, we'd like to thank everybody that's donated so far. It's been a fantastic outpouring. Y'all have done a great job. But, you know, this isn't something that's going to end. We're going to keep doing this, because there's always a need for these supplies. So any police or fire station, drop it off, because we're going to keep this going, and we're going to have a holiday challenge coming soon, I can assure you. If you're looking for some fun, exciting ways to enjoy the fall weather, Longview Main Street has you covered. Come to Downtown Live at Heritage Plaza and enjoy live music from distant, from different local artists on October 9th, 16th, and 23rd. The music starts at 5:30 this Friday, music by Lulu Van Tuckett and The Black Sheep. So instead of heading straight home after work, start your weekend at Heritage Plaza and Downtown Longview. Save the date for Longview Green and Clean on the second Saturday in November. Join us for a partnership between the City of Longview Recycling Program and Keep Longview Beautiful. Our staff will be at Lear Park to help residents recycle junk and other items that usually go to the landfill. Also, a community-wide effort for volunteers will work together to clean litter and beautify the areas where we live and work. This is one of the largest community volunteer days in Longview, and you're invited to join us. To learn more, call 903-237-1250, or visit longviewtext.gov/LGC. Okay. Survey time. I'm going to tell you, this survey was very well participated in, and usually, when I write these surveys, I pretty much feel like I know which answer is going to win. I don't always know, because mine came in last, last time. But this one really surprises me, and not in a good way. It's very disturbing for me, actually. Here's the question. How often do you visit with your neighbors? Your choices were daily. I wave as I drive past them on the streets. I don't know my neighbors. A few times a week, and a few times a month. And what disturbs me is that we don't know our neighbors. And ladies and gentlemen, as Mr. Moore said, we can have all the police we want. If you don't know your neighbors, you should know who your neighbors are, what kind of cars they drive, how many kids they have, who their friends are, who's coming and going, because if you don't recognize that, you're missing the very first step to eliminating crime in our, in our city. When you don't, when you see something that doesn't fit, you should recognize that, and if you don't take the time to know your neighbor, you're not doing your part, and neither is your neighbor. So I, 40% said, "I wave as I drive past them on the street." That was the number one answer. "I wave as I drive past them on the street." I want, I want more than that. I'm just going to tell you, I want more than that. I want you to know your neighbors and be more aware of your surroundings, because that's the, when you're unaware of your surroundings, that's when you're the most vulnerable, and it puts us at a vulnerable place in our city. So let's pick that up, okay? Because a few times a week was second. You come in and out every day. A few times a week is just not good enough for me. So I'm going to ask you to change that, okay? Question two, my favorite way to, and I know y'all thought that was a trite question, because I had a few responses on Facebook saying, "There's more important issues in Longview than hate if you know your neighbors." There really isn't, because that is the basis of the issues we're dealing with that are so important right now. If we take that time to put ourselves out there, we'll see a difference. We saw it at National Night Out. It's just one way, but let's, let's just keep that going. So I'm sorry if you thought that wasn't an interesting question, because I thought it was very significant. It was very timely. Okay, my favorite way to keep informed about what's happening in Longview is watching Channel 5, word of mouth from friends, social media sites like Facebook and Twitter, reading the newspaper, watching local news on TV. Blew me away. Social media, which we knew would win, but by over 50%. Social media. Second, watching local news. Surprising. Third, newspaper. So that's how we get our information, because these things allow us to carry it with us, mobile, however we want to do it. So that's just kind of an interesting, interesting survey to me. State of the city, yeah, watch it if you'd like. The program was, I mean, the event was great, very well put on, the food was fantastic, the speech was average, so best I can do. That's my first one, though. Next year will be better, because I'll be way more prepared. I'll have more than five months of history behind me to give you what I think the state of the city is really going on, so. Okay. We'll now convene an executive session to discuss personnel matters under Text of Government Code, Section 551.074.